United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No invocation.
Father my Father, thank you for this opportunity to gather together council of town of Miami. May thy Spirit be with us that we might be given wisdom to be able to discern the real issues from apparent issues, that we might choose wisely and be able to provide for the growth of the town of Miami. That's for thy blessing to be upon all those who've served the town in any capacity and who've served this nation in any capacity, in a position of protection for the people there. These things we pray for in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Well done.
Thank you.
Great job.
Welcome.
Mayor Madrid.
Present.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilmember Medina.
Present.
Councilmember Moat.
Excused.
Councilmember Ryman.
Here.
Councilmember Sash.
Here.
And Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
We have four.
Right to business, 4A, presentation and discussion only. Open discussion between staff and town council regarding fiscal year 2025 slash 2026 budget. Alexis.
Good evening, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In front of you you have the tentative budget for 2526 fiscal year. At this point, I want to see if you have any questions, Mayor and Council, regarding the numbers that we have presented today.
So the page, page two, we have the proposed budget summary. Twenty twenty four slash twenty five is fifty-three million sixty-seven thousand. If you go over to proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget, it's a hundred and fifty-seven million fifty-four thousand nine hundred and four dollars. That's a pretty huge leap. How'd you get there?
Yes, the amount of grants that we are to be anticipating applying for the town of Miami wastewater roads, it does something that we have already in place for the conversation at the regular meeting, but another reason of increase. We are going to be more aggressive on the grants overtaking for the town.
That's what I want to hear. Very good. You think it's reachable too, huh?
Based on the conversation today, and I want to present the conversation at the regular meeting, yes, we overseas a very positive support from the state of Arizona.
Excellent. Excellent. Anybody else in council got a question?
Yeah. Column here it says adopted budget fifty-three million. No, I don't. Never went. Now that I started reading, I realize I made a mistake.
No worries.
One point on that. Whether the grants are reasonable to assume or not, if there's a chance that we could get them, we need to include them because if we don't, you're sure they can't spend them. I think said it would be helpful, I think, to have just as an aside note, how much of that money is grants and how much is actual other expenditures? In other words, the actual operating cost apart from that which we might do if we were to get grants for.
Yeah, is there a combination of federal states and private grants? And yes, I can break out those numbers.
Yeah, nothing fancy, but just so we get an idea of what our operating costs are on an annualized basis versus what we're expecting to do next year on that same basis. With our regard to these side projects. Maria, do you have the answer for that?
I do. So if we look at the general, it's actually already broken down to just our operating for public works. See, what else is it?
You're talking about general fund revenues?
General fund revenues, yes.
Of course it is.
On page three and four, everything that we receive between property tax, sales tax, franchise fees, building permits, it's all on your actuals to March thirty-first. And what we're proposing with our just estimating the rest of the year. So this is where your revenues are coming in. But if we look at each department where it starts on page six, this is where the general expenditures are. Where we're starting with the mayor and council where we're proposing the nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty. The admin side, we're proposing one point one of expenditures for this upcoming year. And everything that is here at town hall. And then if we continue, we have the police department. And another reason why we do have a little bit of an increase on that general expenditure that it goes to two point eight is because we included, in case that we can't get a grant for a police officer vehicle, we put down online item sixty-six hundred, a hundred thousand for a vehicle. And that's in case that we do not get a grant. Because we know that the condition of the vehicles that they have right now, they're starting to show their age. So we went ahead, you know, if we can't get a grant, at least we can get them one vehicle. And then if we go to page twelve, I did a new column for code enforcement because our numbers need to show what's just police department for the grant funding that's going to be coming up when Alexis and the police department start filling out applications for these grants. They need to see the numbers just for police officers, then excluding the code enforcer. So we went ahead and did a new column for that department. And then community services, we have the forty, thirty-four thousand nine twenty. And then economic development is on page thirteen. And these are all what's under the general expenditure that we have on that summary. And then public works on page fifteen. And we have our magistrate. I know I added the new contract. It actually went down a little bit from the prior year. It was thirty-eight, now it's thirty-six thousand. So that number reflects there. Our parks and rec on page nineteen. This one's another one that's a little higher because our pool is going to be fully functional for the season. And we went ahead and included a pool manager, a supervisor, and six lifeguards. And the applications are, we're starting to collect them for this season coming up, so.
Maria?
Yes.
While you're on that, I see you have cross-stop temporary employees.
So we, we started to allocate correctly. And so they're actually under part-time. And so right now, we just crossed that amount, but we're using new GLs that our reports look a lot cleaner and a lot because they're not, they're seasonal, not temporary.
Right, okay.
What about the library repairs, the floor, the roof?
Okay.
Is it in here?
So the roof, we're going to be talking about it in our regular council meeting because the funding has been confirmed for the roof. So we're not adding it as part of the funding. We're putting that as a, it's going to be a grant, a private grant.
What about the floor?
That's going to be under the grant section, under the library. Let's look at that. Okay, so it's going to be on page thirty. And that's under the library grant. So library grants. We put up one point five.
How much did you put in there for?
One point five million.
Is that a number that you were given by contractor?
No. We have separate quotes. For example, seventy-six, seventy-six thousand. We're waiting for the new quote for, revised quote for the roof. We have a hundred and seven thousand for the flooring. We got already the forty-four thousand for the LED. And we need to work now with the electrical. There is an estimated of one point five million dollars. Because we're short on that, it's going to be difficult to make the repairs. And in addition to that, we need to anticipate an increase in cost of materials.
So it's kind of a order of magnitude estimate, huh? Who knows what we're going to see when we get working on that floor, what's left of it. Councilman, any questions on some of these other pages? Wingers, uh?
Mayor?
Yeah.
I've got a quick question. On page thirty, the construction of Mackey's Camp Dam, phase one and phase two. I didn't know we're building a dam up by Mackey's Camp.
Basically, what we built it as a retention water dams in the high elevation. But now with the decision from FEMA to shut down the BRICS, the BRICS grants, we need to start modify or searching for other opportunity for that. And as you know, in two thousand twenty-ten, Mackey's Camp lost their bridge. And that's an obligation that's coming from the county and the town of Miami is taking over on that.
So are we building a bridge or are we building a dam?
Both.
Both?
Yes. Because based on the studies so far from the US Army Corps of Engineers, they're recommended to retain all the heavy materials, woods, everything. They leave the water running free. And the bridge that is necessary for that area in case of any emergencies and flooding.
Is the bridge going to be in the same place the old one was?
That's going to be depending on the study, or the recommendation.
Is there anything to do something besides put big pipes there?
Yeah, it's a big bridge. There's some areas that need to be drainage. They'd be complete first before the bridge.
Okay.
So one thing I do want to mention that on page thirty-four, for our wastewater revenue, we are considering to increase our sewer rates and then our garbage rates. We want to put our garbage rate and the bulk together. We know that Hela County increased their rates, and they did a forty percent increase. And right now, if we stay where we're at, we're not going to do so good. So we did do a study, and I know that the gentleman is going to come and present the study that was done. And he did say that we need to consider increasing at least a twelve percent for the sewer, yeah, the sewer rates. And then we're just going to go ahead and adopt what Hela County increased. I mean, and we're not really going to make a lot of money, but right now, if we stay where we're at, we're losing money. So if they increase, we're going to have to increase too.
Do you have an approximate dollar figure, estimate, a dollar, two dollars?
It's about, it's about twelve dollars. The reason on the increase is because when the town of Miami took the USDA loan for the wastewater, it's a study that go behind that request of funding. And for the last four years, the town of Miami is supposed to be adopting the increase on the cost of wastewater operation.
Okay, is that twelve dollars for both?
No, that's for the wastewater.
Just for sewer?
Yes.
And then what are you predicting garbage to go up? Is the ballpark, I'm curious. Because here's my question. We're going to spend all this money on the wastewater sewer treatment plant, so won't it run a lot more efficient with everything new? That our costs shouldn't go up as much because everything should be better?
Yes, but at the same time, you have a loan, an active loan for, I think it's two million left that needs to be repaid. If we don't make the increase, the town of Miami is paying that and we, in one point, will appear red. And that was, if you said on twenty twenty-one, correct me, that study, the rate study for USDA was presented in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one?
I think it was twenty nineteen?
Yeah. Yeah, twenty nineteen. And twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, supposed to be adopting a new rate in order to pay off orderly with expenditure from the wastewater. Yes, we have a grant for optimized wastewater, but at the same time, we have a grant that we need to repay to the USDA.
Because of, because of the maintenance repair work, it's added up? How much, how much of the cost has been added to it?
Twenty nineteen is the last.
The last one.
Twenty nineteen.
All right, Maria.
So for the garbage, it'll be a two calorie from what it's at now. So if we charge twenty-five dollars, it'll go to thirty-five. And that's combining also the bulk. So we'll still be picking up the bulk, but it'll be a special pickup. So if somebody has a mattress or boxes, they would call us and we can go pick it up, but there's going to be a charge. And it'll reflect the new charges with Hela County. So that we just pick it up and then, I mean, we won't make money off of it. It's just pretty much just charging them what Hela County charged us.
Thanks.
And then another thing too that we're going to be looking at is increasing our septic receiving. Because if you look at our revenues on that page, they're in there too. So that was page thirty-four. And then we are also considering increasing our courier services. And our courier goes to the valley every day. They take samples for them for capstone to do below the wastewater treatment plant. And then our septic receiving, this is where Johnovich, I shouldn't write it down, but all the big trucks come and they dump. So we charge them for what they, what they dump. And it's a rate. So that's what we're going to be considering increasing too.
Don't they, well, we're charging them anything, don't they, right now, doing?
Actually, the supersization, we lowered their rates the last year. So we're a little bit, we were the same as them, but we protect them the same.
Because they're not going to want to drive that far when they can just go there.
Correct.
The difference of the cost, they're not going to spend it. As long as we're competitive, I just, I don't know. If you get too high, then they start looking for other sources. But that was built over, take that in, so.
Thank you, Josh.
That was my question. At one time, we did raise the rates and the revenue disappeared. A reasonable approach, but the competition.
How long ago was that?
Probably six years ago, seven years ago. Joe was still wants to reach. For two reasons. One was to increase revenue, and the other was we were getting small roads going in there. Chemically damaging to the sewer, and we had to fill it. Kind of wanted to destroy it sometime. It succeeded, but it went too far. Josh, you may refer.
Yeah, so we had a tier increase, so we do the test on each level, and depending on the COD, how heavy the level was, we have a rate that's based off of that.
I have a question, Mayor. Maria, maybe you can clarify this on the enterprise fund. So my understanding is as of three thirty-one, we have seven hundred, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars accumulated.
Yes, because we have our sewer fees, five hundred and fifty, that we've actually received already. Then our wastewater couriers, it's twenty-one thousand. Our septic receiving is one forty-eight. And then any insufficient funds that we, let's say a return check, it's forty dollars, or any, any write-offs that we did, five hundred and fifty. So yeah, that's what we've received.
So my understanding is that enterprise fund, its purpose is strictly only, that money's supposed to be only used for the sewer system. Like, we're not dipping into it to pay other funds. So that's the actual that we have. In case there's need of repairs, if we need a vehicle or we need equipment, that enterprise fund is supposed to be funding for that project itself. So is that the actual, so my question goes back to the beginning. So currently, right now, on our books, that's how much money we have, or have we used some of that money elsewhere? Or is that what we have existing right now in account?
So on our monthly report, I don't have it here with me. I do give you guys where the money is at. On the top of my head, I can't remember, but in our bank total, it's about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have in the bank. But each one, each one is categorized for sewer, if we have our ARPA funds or, you know.
Right, but yeah, I see that. But my point being is that enterprise, that fund money is only supposed to be utilized only for the sewer system. And so that, I haven't seen much coming out of the sewer system. So I just wanted to verify that that's what we're looking at, maybe at the end of the year, the fiscal year, almost a million dollars that we're going to have accumulated. So if we don't get the funds for the repairs of the sewer system, are we going to dump it, get into this fund to offset some of the costs?
No, we receive already the one point nine. Today, actually, we receive all the paperwork that we're going to be, we sign already, we're supposed to be sending already those two documents, the W nine and the actual request of funding for the first month, three months, six months, nine months. It's a thirty-six months project. Yes, we received the one point nine already.
Okay, so then we have additional one million for any kind of essential or something that happens with the sewer system?
In addition to that, we are applying for fifty-five million dollars for the whole system. For example, septic receiving to repairs, Josh presented a list of needs that need to happen between twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. That's the reason we have this map. We're going to be showing the breakdown of the funding that we're going to be requesting for the next three years.
In fact, if you go back to the beginning, Mayor?
Sure.
So going back to, on the front page, on the revenue side, on page three, three and four on the revenue side, where is the revenue that we get from the police department from fines and fees, like for speeding when we go to court, or what line is that under?
So if you see under police department, account for forty thirty-seven, we have impounds. Your actuals are zero. For record, reports, and fingerprints, we have three hundred and twelve. We actually got a grant from Smart and Safe Funds, four thousand and sixty-four. And then I believe we have a couple donations. And that's where miscellaneous funds is seven fifty. And then we got the opioid, eleven thousand. So if you look also on our magistrate.
That's my question. Is it coming out of, so fees from the police department for a year, are you trying to say we have no fees coming from any fines from speeding or red light runners or anything?
Well, they, they come through our magistrate. And the magistrate is on page seventeen.
No, revenue, not, not?
Yeah, we have another revenue, okay. For magistrate fines and fees, our actuals are twenty-five thousand two forty-three.
So that's from speeding tickets?
From whatever is processed at the magistrate.
Code enforcement, police, those two?
Well, code enforcement's separate, right? Because didn't you say you had to separate?
Yeah, but when it comes through the court, they just, I don't know how many, like, what, what are the cases from? Because I don't get to see that information. I just get the revenue, which is fines and fees. And then I just allocate it to the magistrate because that's what they process. But I can't tell you how many cases, I can't. But as of right now, the actuals are twenty-five thousand.
And that's coming with the code enforcement fees on top of that?
I'm going to say yes.
Separate, say, police was twenty-five thousand and code was only a hundred or whatever.
The only thing I can tell you is that that was what was processed through magistrate. And that's the check that we received from, from it.
Mayor, I can help explain to you a little bit.
Yeah.
When it comes to, if you, traffic and other state law citations, most of that money, the fines and the surcharges go to the state.
Yeah, we get only like a quarter of it. But I didn't know what the line item was, like how many?
Right, so if it shows twenty-five thousand in fines and fees, the state's probably getting four or five times that amount because most of the charges are going to be under either Title twenty-eight for traffic or Title thirteen for misdemeanor. And those, almost that fine and all the court surcharges that you pay, or that person would pay, most of the state will fund the course. Quarter of revenue you gotta pay.
And then, Mayor, if I could continue?
Sure.
So looking at, on the police department, on the expenditures, so this is probably a question to Alexis on this. I'm looking at the proposed budget and the adopted budget between last year and this year. And the amount on the salaries are the same at fifty-four nine ninety-five. And the amount on the salaries are the same at fifty-four, nine, nine, five. And I thought previously, uh, last year, around budget time, we had where they were going to get increments of raises over the period of time. So I don't know what's going on, if that's not included in there? Because we didn't do the raises this year that we anticipated we were going to give?
Yeah, the, the raises, uh, for July first, twenty twenty-five are included. And it's going to be from twenty-four dollars to twenty-six dollars is included on the budget. That fifty-four, nine, nine, five is for the chief of police.
So.
Then you see the full-time numbers.
Full-time?
Yes. And one of the elements that we, we're going to be anticipating is going to be a challenge future-wise is the increase of the, uh, police retirement. Uh, is increasing another a hundred and twenty percent?
So what are the, what are your, your plans for this year for the police department for the raises?
It is already approved by, uh, November sixteen, twenty twenty-three, we approved that. It is going to be from twenty-four dollars to twenty-six dollars.
But it's only one time? Because if I'm not mistaken, there were steps that we were going to have.
Yeah, we did it. We started the first one from eighteen dollars to twenty, twenty, to twenty-two dollars on FY twenty-three. And the second one was on twenty-four, May twenty twenty-four, for twenty-two dollars to twenty-four dollars, from twenty-two to twenty-four. Now we are heading from twenty-four to twenty-six.
And that's it? We're going to stop at twenty-six? You're not going to be competitive with other agencies?
I need to bring revenue first in order to secure that. Because you base, it's not only the salary, it's the retirement plan too.
Right.
It's a hundred thousand per officer. That means if I bring another officer, I need to have at least half a million dollars in order in revenue to compensate that expenditure. Because it's not only from our budget, uh, designate those fundings. It's the complete package for the police officer that we need to put in that budget.
Well, I think we need to put priority on our police department and we need to, uh, make some changes. And I believe in our, uh, budget. Because if you look at, and maybe, uh, our lawyer can intervene on this, but, um, I don't have the sheet, but I can guarantee you right now that in any town and city, the police department is the number one, um, expenditure in the general fund. And I'm looking at our budget and administration is number one over our police department.
Yes, and.
And I think your priority needs to be in the police department than in administration.
Yes, and vice versa, and if you can see when I start of twenty twenty-two, August, the police officer salary was eighteen dollars.
But, and, and I get that. But my point being is you're saying you have to find money because of the cost of bringing in another officer or getting raised for our officers. Other towns and cities have their budget that it's going to take out of the general fund to provide these services to the community. And our administration is having more mu, more out of the general fund than our police department is not right.
Yes, and, and I see your point. And one of the elements in, in compared the administration staff versus police department is the cost of the retirement. When you see the cost of retirement for, and, uh, staff, administration staff is only a quarter percent. But at the same time, when we want to provide a competitive salary in addition for the retirement, we need to have a very strong, a very aggressive revenue line item for that. It's not only the police department, fire departments are the two most expensive, uh, budget for any city and town. We don't have those sales tax or construction tax that they can provide for us to create a very aggressive budget for the police department? Yes. We hope with the construction that start today for the, uh, apartment complex, we anticipate one point seven billion dollars on construction tax. We can allocate some funding and create another plan like we did in November twenty twenty-three. And I agree.
I think, I would want to propose in our budget to add for another police officer, uh, on the salary on here and, and find money elsewhere. But I would want to put the budget on here to either give him another raise or to, uh, have money in there for another police officer.
I would, Mayor, I, I would point out that if you look at the, um, administration general fund budget, that half of it is contingency reserve. So if you look at the very bottom line, sixty-eight, ninety-nine, uh, it's five hundred and fifty-six, almost five hundred and fifty-seven thousand is contingency reserve, which is money that's set aside to cover things. In order to make your, your, um, expenditure cap, you, you set money aside for things that you don't sort of anticipate. So, so the operating cost of administration is really half of that, um, one million, one hundred thirteen thousand. So, um, so the police department, if you take out the contingency, um, I mean, it's, it's a policy or judgment call, but it is twice the amount of the administration if you talk, you talk about the actual expenditures.
So can we use that money towards the police department instead of having an admin?
Well, it's a contingency reserve, it's usually one-time money. So, so if you, if you, or things that come up once to purchase or, or pay on, um.
What would, what would we have then, Alexis, then a half a million dollars? We have for contingency for one time? Go ahead, Alexis.
So, um, we've had this contingency reserve since I've been here. And I know Pat, that was one of the things that she wanted us to keep, um, on our budget just in case something does happen, something breaks, something, I mean, you name it. Something that we need to come up with five hundred is right here.
And that's only for admin? Or can you use it elsewhere?
It could be for police department, but as long as it's for the general, from the general.
Well, we try with that funding is to go red. That's what we see that any line item is going to be exceeded, let's say a hundred and ten percent of the budget established. Then with that funding, we presented to mayor and council, we need to make a transfer. We did it on twenty twenty-three in order to be adopting these, uh, increases. We use the overtime funding and I presented to the mayor and council, they got approved. And those are, those are the elements that we present to the mayor and council before we make the study, how much money we anticipated is going to be needed for those.
Mayor, can I continue?
Yes, please. I was, uh, I was going to talk to it, I'm enjoying.
Okay.
Your experience.
While you're still on the subject.
Yeah.
If you look at the administration salary cost for retirement, it's twenty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. If you look at the police department retirement, it's four hundred thousand, thirteen.
Which is typical, yeah.
Four thirteen. So you can't, you know, I understand where you're going with your thinking that police should be a priority.
Yeah.
But you need to paint the whole picture, not just one number. And that's what Alexis said earlier, when you add a police officer or increase the cost, you have an increase to this almost half a million dollars in just retirement.
And, and I get that, but I think public safety in our community should be priority, is my point. So you have to find the money. And if we have to do cuts elsewhere, we'll do cuts elsewhere.
The administration finds the money.
Oh, but, um, so if I could continue, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay. Um, the other thing I have is for our, um, like say, like Stephanie, is there a raise in there? Not just for police officers, but other outfits?
Administration laws.
So that's also included? So there's going to be steps for that?
Yes.
And then going back, you said that, um, on the salary for fifty-five, nine, nine, five for the police chief, should we not raise that up, uh, and put it in the budget in case a chief comes in, uh, that is asking for more? Like, I, I'm just saying, they might not be happy with that and say, hey, I'll come work for you guys for sixty-five. But if we only have fifty-four thousand, we can't spend it because it's not in the budget. So can we add that to increase in case?
Yes, um, back in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, we present a package for their police chief. And I go and talk to Maria about that because we have, uh, our sergeant, we want to promote it to chief. And we want to present the package, the, for the previous, uh, chief of police to be approved. That's what we, we want to anticipate.
But whatever, chief says, I'm, I won't come at fifty-four, I'll come at sixty-five, but you only budget fifty-four?
Yeah, that's, like I say, I'm going to use the previous chief, a package with the week repair to be approved by mayor and council.
But what is their amount if it's not in the budget? What are you proposing?
I'm proposing about sixty to seventy.
But should it not be on here on the budget?
But it was, I was running late on this information for Maria. And this is the first, uh, conversation that we're doing about that.
Okay, I just want to make sure then if that's the.
It's all the areas that we need to modify.
Okay.
Anybody else in the council? Any comments? I have one, uh, one more anyway. A few, few months back, you had mentioned that we're putting a pause on wage increases for the administration.
Yes, that was due to the, uh, federal and state condition that was happening at that point.
Yeah, I understand what it was due for, but where are we at with that?
Uh, based on the conversation right now, as we speak, July first, twenty twenty-five, we're going to be the racing for the police department that's going to be receiving that approval, uh, salary increase. And we continue monitoring, at this point, we have increases on this, on the budget. And we want to be, uh, very analyzing day-to-day operation, how things going. But this already established on the budget, salary increase.
Yeah, uh, so how much? When would they have gotten it if you hadn't paused it? What, what month? April?
Yes, it was, uh, February, March.
February month?
Yes.
So they would have had it in February?
No, uh, I'm sorry. If we maintain the limitation of the salary increase, uh, no, we don't have any, uh, payment specific for that. For, for this current fiscal year.
I, uh, I mentioned it in that meeting when you first said you were going to pause hold off on wage increases as one of the issues you were posing. I said that that's not the right thing to do because what was going on wasn't cashed in, in absolute. It wasn't, it was just a bunch of, of ideas, opinions in Washington about how money is going to be, uh, coming our way. And, and so to penalize our employees, and I, I think it's a, it's a penalty. I wouldn't dare do that to a good working staff, uh, without concrete evidence that we have no choice. So what, what I mentioned in that meeting was that we were going to make it retroactive. When you do start paying it, if it's in July, we need to give them a check that covers all the last month opportunities they would have had. And I, you know, and I have to get the council to, to vote with me on that, but I'm going there with that.
Uh, Mayor, we're not penalizing, we try to, what, our focus is to have a healthy operation. That's the reason we present that multiple area, not only the increase. Uh, it was, uh, all the operation expenditures that we, uh, present in order to maintain a healthy operation for the town of Miami. Because that's the primary element, maintain an operation that is, when they come in with the time for the hours, that we don't have any kind of, uh, element that say that we went red or we expenditures went out of the, authorized by the mayor and council from previous fiscal year.
Well, again, it, it, it's opinion-based. You have your opinion based on what you've heard. I have my opinion based on what I've lived with and what I've heard. And I, I, I don't think that that's good policy is to say, uh, hey, staff, we love you, you're great people, but you're going to have to take a hit just in case. No, I, I, I say we make it retroactive. If, if, especially if we can prove that there was no reason to pause it to begin with. So I'm, I'm just giving you a heads up. And I, I did, uh, confirm with, uh, Joe that the council has the power to make that decision on retroactive pay.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Alexis.
Alexis, I, my timeframe, I'm not a hundred percent sure. But it was either six or seven, eight months ago, the council approved the lease to, uh, police trucks? Where's that at?
Yes.
Where are we at on that?
Um, based on the cost right now, it's a hundred and twenty per unit, per unit, I'm sorry. And it's going to be, we acquire those units, we're going to be out of the budget. We're going to be probably fifty-five percent of that, that light item. We have some fundings aside, um, and we apply for a grant for three hundred thousand to bring the units. But yes, like Maria say, we are, we, we have the funding available plus a grant that was received by the San Carlos Apache Tribe for, uh, for the units.
Okay. How much was that grant for the, from, from the tribe?
It was thirteen thousand.
I ain't going to put it in there.
But if we decide to go, uh, and have the annual payments, we can do it with thirteen thousand. Because that's basically fourteen thousand dollars annually if we want to go, uh, four years payment for that lease.
So how do we get out of budget if we, if it was proposed to council?
Because, uh, the reason was the cost for the uplifting. It went to twenty thousand, the uplifting, D K O's lights. It was eleven thousand when we put the quote, it went to twenty thousand. That puts you under forty thousand dollars over the budget.
So that's all we're off is twenty thousand to get those leased vehicles?
It's the uplifting.
Yeah, so it's only twenty thousand difference? I thought you said it was more than that?
Per, per unit.
Forty thousand?
That's correct.
So can't you make that happen still in the budget if I'm right?
If I, well, that's the reason we applied already for the state, three hundred thousand dollars for units.
So it was a mistake then? So we came to the council to get approval then?
It was not a mistake because we use actual numbers from the dealership at the state label.
But that was never brought back to council to inform us on that?
No.
Anyone else? So when, when do we have to, uh, sign off on this budget?
You have me?
Me?
June, June thirty before June thirty.
Is there a certain amount of, like, we got to have certain round meetings, don't we?
Yes, yeah.
Like come back a couple times before?
Yeah, you had, you had three planned, right?
Yes, before June thirty.
Before June thirty?
Yes.
We did, um, due to the way we have to do our posting, um, it's set by state statute for budget. We do want to shoot, um, for actually, was it the twenty-third?
Yeah.
May?
I think May twenty-third. That way we do our posting and then, um, the, the tax levy, the truth in taxation. So we want to make sure, we want to try and do it. I mean, if we go over, we have to, if we don't do it by the twenty-third, then we'll have to repost. That'll throw us off. So, um, when Maria and I was talking about that, because I'll usually do the tax stuff, I was asking her about the date if she was comfortable with the twenty-third. And she said that would be okay. I think it, was it June twenty-third or?
Did she talk about your preliminary budget approval?
No, final, like, final budget. Before, we want to do it before we even hit, um, July.
May twenty-third for.
May twenty, preliminary.
I'm going to, yeah, yeah, the tentative would be probably May. Yeah, and then the final. But that's just due to the way the posting's required.
Alexis, I do have another question on the police department. And, um, I know, like, right now, we have, uh, for uniform allowance, only five hundred dollars for uniform allowance. Is there a possibility to raise that? Because, uh, you really can't supply, you know, five hundred dollars, especially in today's market. Uh, so could you find some funding in there to raise that from five hundred up to something more? What is your proposal? I don't know, that's I'm asking you. Because I don't know what e, each equipment. I know like the vest and the taser and the pants and the shirt and, you know, all that stuff, it does add up. And so, you know, when you think over a year's time. And so, you know, when you think over a year's time, wear a tear and all that.
Okay, I can present.
So you can check into that, see if there's room in there to add a little bit more for that.
Go ahead, Maria.
One of the things that we could actually do, Karen and myself, we can actually reach out to other municipalities to see what they cover for uniforms. And that way, we're even. And we know that if we do need to increase, you know, what's going to be allowed within that amount. And that way, we can bring it to you guys at the next work session.
Perfect.
Anybody else?
I don't, oh, you didn't, go ahead.
What is it?
Got a couple of trivial things. Believe it or not, our flagpoles are getting kinda run down. I was asking Josh if he could help me with some rope, maybe two hundred feet, five-sixteenths rope. That's when he mentioned that they could use a pay job too. And I agreed, that would really help to bring attention to this town, some nice-looking flagpoles. Also, somebody has been replacing flags, I wish they would contact me, they don't have to, but I wish they would. I try to be the, the, the flag person. And I've been buying the flags myself out of my own pocket. There's organizations that'll pitch in, but I feel that this should be something contributed by the community. So if anybody out there wants to contribute some flags, we'll grab them. The other, I don't know exactly where this would fall in, but I don't know, you've got, you've got noticed that the cardboard and plastics collection bins at the dump has been removed. The individuals weren't making any money, so they stopped that process. So now, we're not keeping up with the environment and recycling our cardboard and, and plastics. But I found out by calling the county, I got into a conversation, it was Tim Humphrey, our supervisor, District Two. And Tim told me that he was working on a project but couldn't get the funding to get a shredder, to shred cardboard mostly, mix it with our sludge that we have here. Also, Globe has the same issue with sludge. If somehow we can get, all three get together and come up with scrap money or whatever, and come up with a program where they will accept cardboards and papers and mix it with the sludge, he was, he got information that he can convert that into compost, which will be very valuable, and probably make some money off of that. So when I heard money, I thought I'll bring it up to the, to the budget meeting. But those are the two items that I have, like I said, trivial, but thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet.
I just wanna reiterate what Vice Mayor Gonzalez is talking about when it comes to law enforcement. Our strategic plan that we, we were hoping to have today or yesterday or tomorrow has been pushed out for one more week. But in that plan, we all discussed the need for law enforcement to have tough business and support from the council and from your, your staff and, and the citizens for that matter. We, we wanna keep looking at ways to get our, our law enforcement up, balanced with GO, balanced with Superior. There's no reason that we can't do that. We gotta find a way. And I think that's from some of the conversations that I've had here with Resolution as, as an example. They're, they're willing to, to help the town of Miami, give us a little more money to get what we need to get. And we, we can't, we can't ignore that. Law enforcement in today's world is so stinking important. I, I'm sick of it, I'm sure everybody else says, we, the fentanyl, the drug cartels, the, all of this has got to be controlling. The only way we're gonna do that is to get the kind of money we need, implement the kind of effort that needs to be in there. So just keep that in mind, Alexis, because we, we have two more events here, we gotta find a way.
Mayor and Council, as I mentioned two months ago, we presented a grant to the state of Arizona for three hundred thousand for the police department. That grant is, they're supposed to be awarded in selected cities and towns no later than May thirty, two thousand twenty-five, and then that, that should be available July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Good, that's encouraging, very encouraging. Is that in the budget, that three hundred thousand?
Ah, yes.
What line is that at?
It's on the grants, on the section from the grants. If you go toward, like, Councilman Ryman was asking about the hundred, the increase on the hundred and fifty-seven thousand? Million, a hundred fifty-seven million, that's three hundred thousand plus another half a million that we're gonna be applying for the grant.
Where's that three hundred at?
What page?
Sorry. I see the cops grant for a hundred and fifty. Is that the grant also for the vehicles?
That was another grant we use for equipment.
So where's that one at? But I see that I've had to go for twelve-five.
Yeah, the, the cops grant is a hundred and fifty, not three hundred thousand. Did you catch that? Well, if you submitted the grant for three hundred thousand, we just need to correct this.
Yeah, that's for the current fiscal year, that three hundred thousand. And my apologies for the delay, I tried to find, I have a worksheet here.
We can add it on the next.
Supposed to be on page four, I don't see the page for the grants.
It's page thirty.
You have it, Maria?
I must have missed that one because it's not on my list. But we could also, I mean, I can add it and subtract it from the miscellaneous grants because I, we have twenty-five million. So if we just need to add another line item, Alexis, if you're okay with that, we can subtract it from the miscellaneous grants and just put a new line item for three hundred thousand. I can do that.
Because the paper that we worked was the red one.
The only thing I have for three hundred thousand is the C V G for roads.
No.
And then two hundred thousand for the town hall upstairs, and that's it.
Yeah, we can put the line item, it says, yes. It's about a hundred thousand the total that we are applying for the police department. The first one was from the state of Arizona for three hundred thousand. And the half a billion that is gonna be coming from the federal government.
Eight hundred thousand?
Yes. Does that grant from the federal government have D E I in there?
Hey, council, any more? Comments, questions? No?
Alexis, could you give us kind of a brief review of what the activity of the town is gonna be during the year covered by this proposed budget?
Can you repeat it again?
Okay. We've got a budget before us that, at the minimum is three million dollars and at the top ends a hundred and fifty million dollars. What, what are we gonna get out of it? What are the people of the town of Miami gonna get out of that process?
Okay, first one, the roads, drainage, road extensions, better roads, better wastewater system. We're gonna have a better police department with new equipment, new units, more cameras. Right now, we have, we're gonna be implementing three more cameras around the town, library, downtown area from the police department going down west. We're gonna be providing a library that is gonna be state-of-the-art with roof, ceiling, better equipment. That's what we, we're doing, we're gonna improve the quality of life for every single council, I'm sorry, citizen in this town. We need to be aggressive for the future, we have some areas that we need to attack, and we're gonna be talking about that in the next council meeting. Because our town is getting old and we can, we need to stop that, we need to be, create a better town. We need to, all those areas, they're getting deteriorating, like Old Frank Street. We need to be aggressive and put funding for that. Our roads, our citizens need a, a better town, and that's what we're doing with a hundred and fifty-seven million.
Question? Alexis, on the, on the libraries, are they gonna do something about air conditioning and heating?
Yes, yes, it's included, yeah, that's the reason why they won't point five million.
Wonderful, thank you.
Alexis, you were, Councilman Ryman's question. You started talking about the condition of a lot of the dilapidated homes and stuff in the area. We have a, a blithe-type program we're gonna get into this, this coming year, right?
Yes, a brownfield, we're gonna be talking about that in the next, six-thirty.
That's something, I, I totally agree with you, we, we have to hit that pretty hard. Get some, get some areas where we can start building new houses.
Okay.
You got a question?
Go ahead, Maria.
So I have a quick question. So for the next budget packet, do you, Mayor, Council, want me to add in the wage increase for just the police department or the whole, for all employees?
Well, in, in, in terms of retroactive pay, yes, we wanna put the money in there. If the council votes with my position on it, we need to have it so we can pay it. And if not, then we'll put it somewhere else. But in, in the police, we, we need to, we need to put the money in there and find a way to make sure we, we can cover it.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Councilman Moats, come in.
Need to adjourn. Mayor? Make a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second?